I think the first thing that's important to understand is the facts about what Resolution 281 did, what it accomplished. And so I've got a number of different bullets. I think the first thing it accomplished is it accurately reflects the municipal boundary as changed by the annexation of the Lakeside property in 2003. Annexation was completed a year after the 2002 Water and Sewer Plan was adopted. It didn't reflect your plan, didn't reflect the town boundary until the adoption of Resolution 281. So for nearly 20 years, the county plan didn't reflect the town boundary, and that's been updated. The second thing is it updated the service area designations in the Water and Sewer Plan to classify the properties specified in the resolution and then owned by Trap East Holdings Business Trust, as depicted by Exhibits A and B of Resolution 281. And I know there has been discussion about, you know, some mapping errors, some drafting errors. The case law in Maryland is very clear that the intent of the legislature controls, and Resolution 281 is very clear, both in its title and its text. It identifies the parcels that were the subject of the application and the parcels that were discussed at the Planning Commission and County Council Public Hearings, and the parcels that were intended to be changed. So I submit to you, it designated as either S1, W1, or retained the S2, W2 designation for those properties that were specifically identified on the application and identified by the text of the title and the text of the resolution itself. I don't believe Resolution 281 has a legal effect on the additional parcels that were either upgraded or downgraded, but not specifically identified in the resolution or discussed during the public hearing. And I'll come back to, you know, cleanup of that mapping issue at the end of my comments.
That's fine.
So approximately one-half of the developable portion of the Lakeside project site is designated as S1, W1. And I think it's important to understand when you look at the land areas, Mr. Clark indicated it was about three-fifths, and I think that's probably correct from a total land area perspective. But the S1, W1 designation includes all of the spray irrigation fields, the bulk of the forests that are in forest conservation, and the lake, because there will be some public recreational amenities that will get water and sewer access around the lake. So when you look at it and you exclude the large lake, the spray fields, and the forest, it's about 50/50 in terms of S1 or S2 designations. The Resolution 281 also updated the narrative description in the text of the water system components of your plan to more specifically describe the improvements that are contemplated for the Town of Trap and Lakeside in particular. And so when this Water and Sewer Plan was adopted in 2002, Mr. Clark indicated that at that time, he reached out to each of the municipalities in the county to understand what their needs and issues were, what their anticipated challenges and changes would be. And Resolution 100, which adopted the 2002 Report of the Review, included language that specifically contemplated the creation of a new Water and Sewer District called Trap East. And it included provisions for the Trap East development that the town suggested to the county is what they had envisioned at that time. So it had a general provision that contemplated extension of water systems to serve portions of Trap East in 2003, but not details. Engineering has been done, water system capacity studies have been completed. There's a lot more details now, obviously, than there were back in 2002. So 281 updated the text to specifically describe new wells that are being added in pairs, water treatment, the sequence of connecting the first well couplet and water treatment to the town's water distribution system, the construction of a water tower, and other details. The next thing that 281 did is it updated the narrative text regarding sewer systems. And as I mentioned, the 2002 plan specifically contemplated the creation of a separate sewer district called Trap East. And based upon information the county received from, you know, conceptual infrastructure thinking by the Town of Trap back in 2002, the 2002 Report of the Review specifically provided for a 540,000-gallon wastewater treatment plant to serve Trap East. It noted that that plant would discharge its wastewater by spray irrigation. It described that as a BNR-level treatment plant. The 2000, I'm sorry, the 2021 amendment, the Resolution 281 amendments, updated that text to require the Lakeside, formerly Trap East wastewater treatment plant, to be ENR rather than BNR. It also provided for phased construction of the wastewater treatment plant. 20 years ago, the method of construction that was anticipated was the construction of a large concrete tank structure with 540,000 gallons of capacity. In other words, construction of the whole treatment plant at once, which presents operational challenges.
Ryan.
The 2002 Report of the Review authorized the construction of a BIOLAC treatment system with BNR-level treatment. B is in biological nutrient removal. 281 changed that text to require the Lakeside or Trap East Service District to be served by an ENR or enhanced nutrient removal plant. So required a higher level of treatment than was in the plan before 281 was adopted. The other structural change to the wastewater treatment plant before the plant was proposed as a BIOLAC plant that was constructed all at once, the changes in technology allow that to be constructed in a modular fashion now. So the new text provides for phased construction of the treatment plant. It also authorized service of the initial 30,000 to 40,000 gallons of flow to be through the town's existing wastewater treatment plant. And I understand that's probably the principal focus of all of this discussion over the last many months. Another thing that Resolution 281 did is it added details regarding financial management for the Trap East Sewer District. It was not contained in the 2002 Report of the Review. Notably, 281 updated capital improvements tables in both the water and the sewer portions of your plan. So it updated the date for construction of the water distribution system for Trap East or Lakeside. The 2002 plan contemplated that that infrastructure would begin construction in 2003. It obviously didn't begin in 2003, so Resolution 281 updated that date to 2020. As you know, construction of that started 2021. It provided for the addition of a water treatment facility and well couplet in the Trap East Service District, as I mentioned before. It changed the timing for extension of the Trap East water supply system from 2006 to occur over the next eight years. So the 2002 plan calls for the Trap East District to be further extended in 2006. No construction occurred before 2021. So your current plan, as amended by Resolution 281, calls for that system to be expanded between 2023 and 2030. The capital improvements table in the water system now calls for the construction of a 250,000-gallon water tower to help maintain water pressures in the trap water system. It also deferred the date for extension of water supply in the White Marsh Service District, which has nothing to do with Lakeside. But the 2002 plan, before its amendment, contemplated that the White Marsh Service District would have water extended in 2004. The plan, as amended, calls for that extension to occur in 2025 through 2030. And then notably, the last thing it added to the water table is it added a new capital project for the town, which was a new well and treatment system in the Piney Point Aquifer at a cost of about $1.1 million. And I don't believe Ms. Ryan mentioned it, but that well is, as I understand it, is substantially, was substantially completed last month, and final completion of that improvement is anticipated in the next several weeks. So that's a capital improvement that the town couldn't have obtained permits for absent Resolution 281. You put it in the capital improvements table at the request of the town. MDE issued those permits. The town spent a little over a million dollars and has constructed a new well based on Resolution 281. Yes, so the town will have one water system. The water system is looped, and so the water supply, the water system has adequate capacity to serve initial phases of the Lakeside project. The first pair of wells that will be added to the system have been constructed. They already exist. All that we need to do is add treatment and connect those into the water system. And then as additional demands occur on the system, a water tower, a second water tower will be added to maintain pressures, and then additional wells and water treatment will occur throughout the buildout of the project.
I see. And what you just said, I'm just trying to follow you a little bit. This 281 allowed this to happen?
Well, all of, everything related to Lakeside is permitted by the 2002 Report of the Review. 281 has more detail, so it provides better granularity for the infrastructure planning. And it updates the dates. Your plan before 281 said all of that would happen 18 years ago.
I see.
It didn't. So you updated the dates, and in some cases, you know, where it talks about the additional extension into the rest of Lakeside, you pushed that out to 2025 through 2030.
Got you.
So you updated the timing. The component that is really truly new was the construction of a new well and water treatment system for the town, which they've already completed.
Got you.
The next changes that 281 accomplished are in the Table 21, which is the Trap Sewer System Capital Improvements Table. And again, it's not coincidence that the 2002 Report of the Review referenced a 540,000-gallon wastewater treatment plant for Trap East. That was the conceptual size that was determined to be needed for an annexation that the town was beginning to think about infrastructure for, and that's what we're building today. So your table still contemplates a 540,000-gallon wastewater treatment plant, but the timeframe for construction was changed from 2003, which is when it was anticipated to be starting in 2002 when the plan was adopted, to 2020. So you pushed that forward 17 years. It made similar changes on the extensions of that sewer collection system throughout Lakeside, and instead of saying it would start in 2006, it pushes, you know, future extensions down into the 2025 through 2030 timeframe. Similar to water for the White Marsh Service District, you adjusted the date for extension of sewer to the White Marsh District from 2004 to 2025 through 2030. The extension of sewer along Howe Point Road was contemplated in 2002 to begin in 2005. That hasn't happened, so Resolution 281 pushes that capital improvement project out to 2022. And then these are two really significant changes. Resolution 281 amended the capital improvements table to provide for upgrade or replacement of the traps, of Trap's existing wastewater treatment plant. So as Ms. Ryan just reported, because you adopted 281, and 281 provides for an upgrade of the town's treatment plant to ENR, they're able to complete and submit a PER to MDE, which is undergoing review. That was added by Resolution 281. It wasn't added because of the discussion that's occurred over the last six months. It wasn't added because of the violations that occurred in February. That capital improvement was identified by the town, discussed with Mr. Clark beginning in 2019, and was presented to the county in the application as an improvement the town intended to make, beginning, you know, as indicated in that table. And the county adopted 281, it puts a capital improvement in the program. The other capital improvement, which goes to the questions about INI, the town specifically identified, again, back in 2019 and 20, a need and a desire to further address INI in its system. And so the town called for the repair or replacement of seven of their existing pump stations and gravity lines throughout the town. That was put in 281. The council's adoption of 281 added that as a capital improvement. The Harrison Circle lining of collection system was done by the council and completed a little more than a year ago. Notably, the town has incurred expenses and borrowed in excess of a million dollars, about a million and a half dollars, for design of pump stations that are in Resolution 281. And that upgrade is intended to address the INI issues that exist in the town. So I think the next thing I'd like to talk about is what would be the impact of undoing Resolution 281, whatever that means? And to be very clear, for the reasons I've previously expressed and don't think we need to get into tonight, I do not believe the county council has the legal authority to rescind Resolution 281. So I'm just speaking hypothetically. I'm not conceding that you can, but I'm just saying if you did that and purported to rescind it, what would that mean for the Lakeside project in the Town of Trap? The first is phasing of the Lakeside Water and Sewer Service Designations. As Mr. Clark advised, MDE has indicated for years that it views the S2 designation on Figure 24 of the 2002 Report of the Review as the service area designation under the Water and Sewer Plan. And I'll come back to that in a minute. I agree with that interpretation. And MDE has also, as I understand it, consistently advised the county engineer that because of the passage of time and the time that was specified in the 2002 Report of the Review, it didn't matter whether it's S1 or W, I'm sorry, S1 or S2, everything that's in the Town of Trap is available for service. So what Resolution 281 did is you adopted new Water and Sewer Service Area Designations, and you designated the southern half of the project as S2, W2. And under the county's Water and Sewer Plan, S2, W2 is a service designation that indicates its program for progress within a three- to five-year period from the date of adoption of the amendment. So before 281, the entire 2,500 units of Lakeside in MDE's minds could be served by water and sewer. After the adoption of 281, the southern half of Lakeside isn't available for service until three to five years after your adoption of 281. If you rescind 281, my belief is you revert back to that S2 designation for the entire property, but the three-to-five-year measurement is from the date of adoption of the plan. So it's three to five years from 2002, not three to five years from your rescission. So in other words, the entire area is available for service. The rescission or unwinding, whatever the right verb is, of Resolution 281 would change the specifics about the Lakeside wastewater treatment plant. Go back to the language that's in the 2002 plan. There's still specific provisions for a 540,000-gallon per day treatment plant that will use spray irrigation for its disposal, but it would be permitted to use BNR, biological nutrient removal, treatment technology, instead of today's standard of enhanced nutrient removal. So you would permit a less stringent permit to be issued. The first 120 homes to be constructed to the, to be connected to the Trap wastewater treatment plant, and again, as I mentioned, I understand that's largely the focus of comments that you've received, I don't believe, even if you have the ability to rescind 281, it will have any legal effect on the connection of those homes. And that's for a couple of reasons. After the county adopted 281, it went to MDE. MDE also reviewed and approved Resolution 281. On the basis of those approvals, the town and the developer entered into a contract pursuant to which the town allocated 120 equivalent dwelling units, or EDUs, of capacity to the Lakeside project. The town's received payments in excess of $600,000 using the town's standard sewer capacity connection charges, and has been paid for that capacity. The developer has progressed with construction on the basis of that agreement. Also, on the basis of both that agreement and Resolution 281, construction plans were designed for a pump station that will send wastewater initially to the town's collection system and then ultimately to the Lakeside treatment plant. Those plans were submitted, they were reviewed and approved by the town's engineers, and then they were submitted to MDE. And MDE reviewed and approved those plans and issued a construction permit for the pump station and force main connection to the Town of Trap in April of 2021. That force main has been constructed, it's in the ground, the wet well and pump station are in the ground, mechanical equipment is being installed, the pump will be set as soon as electric is extended to the pump station. But that improvement is substantially complete. So even if you have the ability to rescind 281, I don't believe it will be permitted by MDE or the courts for improvements that were contractually arranged between the town and the developer, and specifically permitted by MDE and constructed before your rescission. I don't think that's going to have any legal effect. The existing town well project, same analysis in my mind as the force main connection for the first 120 homes. That well was financed by the town, it was permitted by MDE, it's almost complete. I think that well will be allowed to stay and will be allowed to be utilized by the town. Two important things that I think will be impacted by rescission. MDE's review of the PER and funding for upgrade of the town's wastewater treatment plant. As Mr. Thomas indicated, capital improvements have to be consistent with the county's Water and Sewer Plan. So if the county rescinds 281 and eliminates the provisions for upgrade of the town treatment plant, I'm not sure how MDE will review a PER, discuss funding for a project that's not scheduled as a capital improvement, but is required to be. And the same is true for the pump station project. It might be slightly different because, as I understand it, the town has borrowed the money and started design, but the town doesn't have construction permits for its pump station upgrades to address INI. If you rescind 281 and those upgrades, the capital project is not in the table, I think there's a significant question as to whether MDE can issue a construction permit for the pump station upgrades. So let me stop there and see if there are questions.
So I'd like to back up to where the town and MDE and the developer had a contract together to hook up to the town. So run by that one more time, so everybody understands it.
So after MDE formally approved Resolution 281, and the provision that authorized the temporary connection of the 120 homes was in the county Water and Sewer Plan, the town and developer engaged in negotiations about that connection. One of the provisions of Resolution 281 specifically says that the connection for the startup phase of Lakeside is subject to availability of capacity and approval of the town. So the town's engineers conducted an evaluation to determine how much capacity the plant had, how much they wanted to reserve for infill and other development, and therefore identify what was remaining and available. And they confirmed that they could make or would make available 120 units of capacity in the treatment plant. The town and the developer signed an agreement in January of 2021, under which the town allocated that capacity in the existing plant to the Lakeside project, and the developer agreed that it would pay for that capacity at the town's current rates. My understanding is the town intends to use that money to help reduce the debt or pay for their capital improvements. We've paid the fees in advance of needing it to the town, and so in my mind, that agreement has been fully executed, signed, and performed.
Mr. Shaw Walter, could you review the timetable? You know, what's likely, what's committed, what's required for those first 120 homes to...
So the initial startup phase of the project, as described in Resolution 281, you know, would have no more than 30,000 gallons per day of flow. The town didn't allocate a flow rate. The way the town allocates capacity is on the basis of EDUs. And so the town has permitted 120 units to connect to its system. One important nuance to understand is that the town will look at the flow they generate and determine how much capacity it has in the future. So the fact that they've allocated 120 EDUs to this project doesn't necessarily mean this project will generate 30,000 gallons per day of flow. We think it will be less than that, but that's a conservative number that's used when allocating capacity. So that agreement permits up to 120 lots to be created for connection to the town system. The construction that began this summer, this past summer, in July of 2021, is construction in the first section of Lakeside, Section 1A. It consists of 95 lots. And of those 95 lots, there's a sales center, a model center. So 12 of those lots will be model homes. They'll be constructed early, and so you will see those homes, and I guess, you know, when someone's visiting a model, there may occasionally be some restroom use, but they're going to generate very little flow because they're not going to be occupied. 83 of the 95 homes will be constructed and available for occupancy. The second section of that startup phase, Section 1B, is an additional 25 lots. So the total anticipated to be connected is up to 120 homes. We can't construct a model home without creating a lot. So we'll allocate capacity to the model home, but really only 107 of the 120 will potentially be available for occupancy because the others will be models and not occupied by families. The construction of the Lakeside wastewater treatment plant will begin as soon as it is permitted. So MDE is reviewing public comments that were collected in late October on the discharge permit. MDE has to issue a discharge permit for the spray irrigation disposal and issue a construction permit that relates to the discharge limits established in that discharge permit. I don't know what the timing of MDE's action is. I hope that it is in, it occurs in the near future, but I don't control MDE's timing. As soon as we have a construction permit for the Lakeside wastewater treatment plant, the first phase of that plant will begin construction. And the anticipated timeframe for construction of the Lakeside wastewater treatment plant is approximately 18 months. We hope we can do it sooner than that. You know, if there are COVID-related procurement issues, it may take a month or two or three longer, but 18 months, we believe, is a reasonable projection of the timeframe for construction. As soon as that treatment plan is operational, the pump station and force main that connect Sections 1A and B to the Town of Trap will be redirected to the new Lakeside wastewater treatment plant, and flow from Sections 1A and B will go to the Lakeside ENR plant. So if MDE issued a construction permit March 1st, then we could be looking at a Lakeside plant that is completed in fall of 2023 and flow diverted in that direction at that time. That may very well be before the 107 homes that are intended to be available for occupancy will even be all occupied. You know, the timing of buildout, timing of occupancy, is going to be driven by the market. And if I had a crystal ball, you know, we'd probably be in a different place. So we don't know what that timing will be, but contrary to suggestions you've heard in the past, it's not our intent to construct this project and live off of the 120 units and defer construction of that treatment plant indefinitely. It's exactly the opposite. We intend to start construction as soon as construction permits are issued.
I mean, you have said that many, many times, and can you hear me? Let me see if I can get some video, if I can get video.
I can hear you, I can hear you fine.
And the resolution that I put out basically just said what you just said and put it in writing. And I've asked you that, you know, before. Can you put that in writing? You know, intent is a wonderful thing, but as any good person, business person knows, if you don't have it in writing, then you ain't got it. And I, you know, I believe the intentions are good, but circumstances happen. And so that's really what I put forth with 313 was just basically to get that in writing, that once they construct, gave you the discharge permit, you know, 18 months from there, which is really following your timeline. I listened to your words when preparing that resolution. I listened to your words when when preparing that resolution, and, you know, a couple of months ago, it seemed like you and the Town of Trap were on board with that. I mean, I think there were some conversations that had been had. I think Mr. Callahan and Mr. DiVillo may have met with you, and that seemed fine, and somehow 313 has kind of fallen apart. So is it possible, without us needing to do anything from a legislative action, for you to add that to the agreement?
The notion that we will connect those homes, that we shall connect those homes to the Lakeside Plan as soon as it is complete, was added to the DRA. So that this this general comment or question, you know, arose before the town council's hearing on the First Amendment to the Developers' Rights and Responsibilities Agreement. They specifically discussed, or we specifically discussed, an amendment or a change before the public hearing, and then they revised that document to to make the redirection of flow mandatory. So that was put into the DRA. I've indicated to you before that we don't have a problem, speaking on behalf of the developer, committing to beginning construction of that wastewater treatment plant as soon as we have those permits. Now, you know, if if those permits are appealed, obviously, appeal periods have to lapse, I mean, we we have to be in a position where we can truly construct the plant, and and that sentence of Resolution 313, I think, was consistent with our discussions. And I don't have a problem, I've committed on the record multiple times and am doing it tonight, and we can work with you to find another way to memorialize it. It is our intent, and we're willing to commit to constructing the Lakeside Treatment Plant first phase as soon as we have final non-appealable construction permits for that project. Say the 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 one thing that that you we've had, that I've always had as a caveat that I want to make clear, a change in the commitment, the 18th month timeframe is a a reasonable best guess, you know, so we don't control procurement, we don't control timing of construction, we can control when we start, and we can commit to to working in good faith, and believe me, it's in our interest to have that completed, because if the market is is as strong as it it has been for the last several months, you know, the 120 homes of capacity in Trap will be a constraint. Having that plant constructed is what we need to have in order to continue construction progress with the project. It's it's clearly in our interest to make it happen. I just don't want to be in a position, if we're at month 19 or 20, for reasons beyond our control, that everyone becomes upset and says that it's bad faith, misrepresentations and default, because that obviously would not be where we are.
No, as long as everything, once it's, you know, once it starts and you're going through a process and you don't just stop for some arbitrary reason, you know, okay, fine, you can't get a pipe because it's stuck on a boat somewhere out in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean, I mean, that's completely different. But as long as everything, you know, all the efforts are being made to continue and you don't go, oh, my gosh, we can't sell any homes, and so I don't want to invest, you know, however many millions of dollars it takes, because the market changes, which we know can change, you know, any minute. So as long as all the efforts are being made, despite, you know, even if, you know, again, if you have some supply chain issues, which we certainly have now, but not simply because of cost or the market.
There are certainly members of the public, I understand, who don't want to see this project happen, and that's that's, you know, their principal objective in comments. I think there are others who accept that this project is going to happen and want to see all of the wastewater treated with with E and R level technology. And I think that the the latter is where this is going to head, and frankly, you know, I think it's in the the council's interest, rather than relying on anything we commit to, the best way to see this happen is to have MDE issue discharge and construction permit so we can, we can put the shovels, you know, where these words are and build the plant, and and we're prepared to do that as soon as we have a permit.